Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Council meeting. This is January 25th, 7 o'clock. All members of council are present except Dr. Peening, who's enjoying himself at a wedding in California. If you had recognized that the press had been notified and the public is present, please rise for an invocation and pledge allegiance. Let us bow our heads. Oh heavenly Father, we begin our work this new year. We thank you for giving us such a wonderful place to live, raise children, and enjoy each other. We thank you for our health. We ask that you remember those sick. We thank you for our food, and we ask that you remember the hunger. We thank you for our freedom and safety, and ask that you remember those that serve to keep us free and safe. For it is in your name we pray.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I might have already done the roll call, Marie.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is reading of the journal of the previous meetings. You have about an inch of paper that you would have gone through by now. Our regular meeting of November 16th, our special meeting of December 7th, again, a special meeting of January 4th, and then the volume from the special meeting of January 18th. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion approved. Any discussion, additions, corrections? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would like to thank Marie for getting that last one out, January 18th. It was important, and it was long, and I'm certain it was arduous, and I hope your ears can take a rest right now. All right, consideration of Mayor Pro Tem.
I'd like to nominate Mike Loftus.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other nominees? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Welcome. My insurance is paid up.
Stay healthy.
I'm still in good health. But stay ready. Okay, citizens' comments. Do we have anybody who's with us tonight that would like to address council? None? None heard? All right, we're gonna move on. We're gonna hear now from the reports of standing committees. First one is the Ways and Means Committee, which I have the pleasure of reporting. We met last week on January 18th at 5:45. I was elected chair again, and Brian Duffy is the vice chair. So we'll go through the next budget cycle in that order. We heard from our financial, our treasurer, who gave us a report, which was a pleasant report to receive. Our revenues are 8% above where they were the same time last year, so that's good news. And our expenditures relative to our budget are at 43% of budget, which if you nominalize the payment of our debts, we would be normally 45% of budget, which is a 10% advantage. So being 10% under budget in our expenditures and on our target for revenue is very good news for our general fund activity. So kudos to the staff. Our city administrator carries a big whip, apparently, and the members of the staff crack too when she throws it at them. That's good news for the moment, and we'll get on with the rest of the year. Our tourism-related income activities, we've had no income from the state since, well, for three months now. As usual, they pay on quarterly basis. Our municipal accommodations tax, which is current through December, we are 19% ahead of where we were in fiscal year 10. So I would say that the tourism-related funds dealing with municipal accommodations is back and very robust, and I guess those of us on the island see it, have seen it every month since in this fiscal year has exceeded any month in our prior history. So tourism is alive and well on the island. We've had no activity from the Charleston County, pass-through activity. Our hospitality tax, again, is 12% higher than where it was this time last year, and that, again, is through December. So that's all very good from a tourism-related income standpoint. Our major projects, we've had frankly, either a beach restoration or drainage project or city hall renovation. We've had no major expenditures in any of those in the last couple of months, so those basically stand as they have been and are ready to launch some activities, particularly in the drainage area, which you'll hear about that in some of the reports from our committees. In our subjects on new business, we talked about three amendments to our contract dealing with the renovations to this building from Wilson and Associates. I'll make a motion to approve change order number two from Wilson and Associates developers in the amount of $3,240 to reconstitute the wiring for 12 hurricane shutters, and that adds five days to their construction schedule. Second. Motion is second. This is basically an oversight in the documentation. We had them take it out, but we didn't, the documents didn't ask them to put it back. And so when that was discovered, the cost increase was $3,240 is what they proposed. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Our next motion, again, was titled change order number four from Wilson and Associates, and this is the amount of $2,228 to install, we'll call it a pass-through window, in the offices of general government upstairs. This adds three days to the contract. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion is seconded. This is basically taking the window we had from our dispatch center here on this floor and moving that window and installing it for that sum of money upstairs to keep that area safe and secure when it's lightly occupied. So, any discussion on this motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Thank you. And we move to change order number five, and again, from Wilson and Associates. This is for $1,258 to relocate a window. This adds five days. The window as originally positioned, when it was being cut in, turns out to be, there's a joist dealing with the overhead roof area that was interfering with the window, so the intent here is just to move the window down, I guess, a couple of feet, whatever. But we have to cut a new window, insulate, and repair the old cut. So I make a motion for $1,258 for amendment number five for the window.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the consideration of state health plan. This has been a discussion point that we've had within the city and within council for the last couple of months. The South Carolina Local Government Assurance Group is basically going out of business. They are no longer offering health insurance after the 1st of July.
That's correct.
Proposed. I don't know if the vote is finished yet, but...
I haven't heard anything, but I feel reasonably confident that it would go through.
The recommendation from the municipal association is that they close that out, and all of the participants, we being one, are voting, and all the votes as of, I guess, about a week ago, were favorable. So that insurance program under which we had our health coverage will expire at the end of June. And the, and there is no successor plan, but we have sought out and have a plan to enter the state standard health plan, which would give our employees the same coverage, basically, as state employees. That is an option for all municipalities, and we're jumping on the bandwagon early here in trying to get in so that we can be of record. There's a 90-day gestation period as well after we make a full application. So we want to be up and running and have all our documentations in place. The good news out of this is, while it's not an exact mirror image from a plan standpoint, it is close, but the premiums are such that it will save our employees and save the city money as we go through the course of a full year. So it's a win-win for everybody. The employees get good coverage, the city, and saves money. The city saves some money, and we have no interruption in our health coverage for our employees. That includes both health coverage, general coverage, and vision coverage as well. So I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the staff to proceed, file the appropriate applications, and provide a $500 fee with that application.
Second.
Okay. All right, good. You're jumping ahead of me. So that we can get into the state plan with Blue Cross Blue Shield, so...
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. What happens where you have a case you filed with the state insurance, and you're, say you're ill during this transition? Is it still gonna be covered by the old insurance?
Yes.
I mean, they don't just cut you off at the knees.
No. There is what's called a run-out-of-claims liability.
Okay.
Which will be paid by South Carolina Local Government Assurance Group.
The group will maintain, see if I understand. The group will maintain it's a residual balance at the end of this year for 12 more months, working off subsequent claims that come through. And at the end of 12 months, they don't process any more claims. You have to process 12 months of your coverage. And then a year from this June, they look at whatever balance they have, and then refund that to all the participants on a pro-rata basis or something.
Because the monies were pretty tight for their reserves.
Right.
Or loan.
It's getting thin.
Right.
So I appreciate their coming forward and alerting us, taking the action they have before we get into difficulty and have a call for additional funds that would hurt both the employees and the city. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Motion is seconded. All in favor of going with the state health plan and asking the staff to proceed on that basis, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? All right. You've got your work going up.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the Public Safety Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met January 11th. I was elected chairman, and Councilmember Loftus vice chairman. On the agenda, we discussed the 2011 East Cooper triathlon, pros and cons of it, and I'll report that the Public Safety Committee voted unanimously not to hold that, any portion of that on the Isle of Palms this year. And I know we'll be voting on that later on in council under miscellaneous business, so I won't discuss it anymore. And if I can turn pages here, I'll get you some more information. Got an update on the public safety building. We had some defective smoke detectors in the elevator shaft. They replaced a defective one and also replaced the other one, just since they thought it might be susceptible to the same situation. They had a few plumbing issues that were traced to a construction fault which has been handled. And as far as the HVAC, there was a, they had a meeting on the 12th, and they said they have, there were some, maybe some construction problems and some setting problems. Everything's been set to the way it is, and it should work, but we're going to wait until the hot season and make sure that it works. Talked about false alarms and cities' alarm ordinance, and that's something we are looking into. We each got a good stack of information from the fire department to look over prior to our next meeting, which, which time the chief will make a recommendation to us. Also, in that same line, talked about short-term rental business license applications, and perhaps the need there to state that they do need to have smoke alarm, smoke detectors in all sleeping areas, in all areas of egress, and an indication of an emergency contact. This emergency contact is so important in these rental agencies. Again, we've got gathering information on that, and we'll get a recommendation in the February meeting. We discussed the EMS response time, and a question came up on that. At some point, the number of ambulances had been reduced around the road for a while. The chief's been told the number has returned to an appropriate level, and the call level has been reduced with the end of the tourist season. So we shouldn't have problems now. We will continue to monitor it. The chief's gonna have for some information from Charleston County EMS to keep up with it. And as a note, Administrator Tucker mentioned that Mount Pleasant has several paramedics, and should we determine that we're not getting an EMS unit over here in the proper time, which could be for various reasons. EMS is sadly to say very busy. We could be on one call and not be able to make it. But their first responders, we've got to deal with them to where they will send one of their first responders over here. One of, I'm sorry, one of their paramedics, which can do more than our first responders can. Go over some of the highlights of the departmental reports. The fire depart, for the fire department, they received 51 calls. Of that number, 23 were EMS calls. There were 14 fire inspections performed, and five violations were found. Under police, total calls processed by the city's telecommunications personnel were 3,637. Of that, 2,237 were for the police department. Also, on December 10th, Officers Nelson and Quinn graduated from the Criminal Justice Academy, so they are doing their onsite training now. And we also have another officer who came, who was an officer previously, who's gone through the academy, and he should also be on board, ready to go full-time about the From 238 traffic stops made in December, 62 tickets were issued. We had one fireworks complaint and 10 laws ordinance complaints that were received, which resulted in four citations. Excuse me. Under miscellaneous business, Administrator Tucker wanted to take the opportunity to commend the fire department for their efforts at 622 Ocean Boulevard. And by the way, part of the reason we're looking at smoke detectors and all is that there was a baby asleep on the third floor of that unit, of that rental unit, and the smoke detector alerted the residents to evacuate the building. Could have been a much worse turnout than it was. And we'd like to commend the help that we got from Sullivan's Island, Mount Pleasant, North Charleston Fire Department, who were on scene. The, our throat problems here. Oundoff Fire Department covered the Isle of Palms fire station, and Charleston County was present to provide warmth to the firefighters when they were relieved. And as you know, that was one of the coldest nights we've had in a good while. Our next meeting will be at 5:30 Tuesday, February 8th. And at this time, something that we really didn't discuss a lot in the meeting, we discussed it many times before, I can assure you, and that is the county digital radio system. And since it kind of came from public safety and moved to council, I'll go ahead and turn the discussion of the results of that January 8th special meeting over to the mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Marty. We all sat through and listened to the county's presentation, which was far more detail, frankly, than what I expected to receive, which is the first time I've seen that from the county. So I think they listened to us. More importantly, they listened to the chief and the other chiefs in the county that have been telling them how the system has been operating. Relative to the decision we have to make, is we have to make a decision as to whether to authorize the staff to proceed, to augment our ordinances to allow a tower for county's safety, county and our protection, to be constructed up to 200 feet. And of course, the site that they have identified and the one that they now would say, well, I think we got it out of Motorola at least, they prefer the site that has been selected, which is the existing tower down on 41st Avenue, to extend that up to 200 feet, or less than 200. If council is of a mind, we should release staff to proceed to augment, and that will require us to modify, change our zoning ordinances specific for that type of application. And I know we have templates where Folly Beach and others have modified their ordinances to allow public safety towers of that height. We've not discussed it as a council, so I'll throw it open now for discussion if anybody has any other...
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we move ahead with whatever it takes to ensure the safety of our fire, police, and residents by exploring what it takes to change our ordinances and backing the county's investment in a tower in our community at 41st Street.
Very good. I'll stick to that. Have a motion and a second. Discussion any further? I mean, I think we were all pleased with the presentation, at least the level of detail. And subsequently, they provided us some more maps. I mean, why they do everything in blue, very little, I don't know, but it's a lot of me. Michael.
Question really for Linda. Have we received the independent study about the tower from the consultants? I know you have asked for that several times. We've asked for it in public safety meetings. It was asked for the meeting we had with county. Have we received that information?
No, sir. We have not received that information. And when, I believe it was Walt Smalls responded to that inquiry, his response was not that the entire report would be provided, but that he was aware of certain sections of it that he could provide. But no, I have not received anything other than, since the meeting, other than the map that more carefully depicted the outline of Isle of Palms, which we couldn't see on the original maps, but I have not received that report yet.
We'll follow up and make sure we've got it. I mean, he made a commitment to give it to us. Part of it, I suspect, is not available to us because it's a legal position from their attorneys and the consultant's attorneys, providing them information, so they probably won't make that.
I just think we need to have...
But all of the technical stuff, I want to...
We need to have everything in order to make a decision what's best for the Isle of Palms, so...
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm pretty confident, based on the presentation, that they actually have done the homework that was required to do a redesign of the network so that we actually do have an optimal network, not only for the Isle of Palms, but for the entire county. And I personally would like to commend the county for going back to the board and making that happen.
Frankly, and I think Brian brought it up, I think we're all disappointed that it took this long to get us to a point where we now feel that there may be, they're offering a competent system. Why this took so long, why they got the way they, I mean, maybe that's why the lawyers have been involved, I don't know. It's very disappointing for us and for the chief and the rest of the fires, not only here but elsewhere, the police included, that they've had to fight this for the last two and a half years and will be for the rest of this year at least, so...
And I would like to commend Chief Graham for bird-dogging this for two years. She did a great job pushing the county to go back to the board.
I would just be concerned that this ordinance that we're gonna craft doesn't open the door for other towers, even the possibility of anything that's all being put on the island.
We'll be very careful about that.
You'll get a chance to preview it, but it's, it'll be pretty restrictive for public safety use. So, no other discussion? We have a motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Good. Marty, please move on.
One other part of the, no, I'm sorry. I'm moving ahead of personnel.
You're going too fast.
Not my surprise. You gotta cover that one too.
Easy boy. Okay. He's motivated, okay.
He's going too fast here. Any questions for the overall public safety report? Thank you very much. Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works met on Wednesday, January 5th at 4:00 PM. Just like to inform you that I was elected chair, and Councilmember Thomas was elected vice chair. And as everybody on the island knows, Director Pitts and his crew are doing a great job at picking up our trash and keeping the island clean. It just does, it does a great job. The amount of garbage on the island continues to trend down for whatever reason, but that's a good thing, for all intents and purposes. In the meeting, we had some discussion with regards to our drainage projects, which is pretty much the hottest topic that we've had in Public Works over the last two months. We're continuing, Charleston County's continuing with its drainage project on Long Boulevard, and they are also in the planning stage for working out the drainage issue back on Sparrow Drive. So those two are moving forward. And the big project, which is the 53rd, 52nd to 57th Avenue Drainage Project, is moving forward. We've had some delays in our anticipated schedule, but it looks as though we've gotten all of our easements through, and I'd like to be able to announce tonight that the city is planning to put the project out for bid this weekend. Bid notices are going out, and we expect to have a mandatory bidders conference on February 4th, that's Friday, at 10:00 AM. So anybody that might be seeing this out there that wants to bid, please, please take a look. It'll be on our website, correct?
That's correct.
So that's really good news. We're a little bit behind on the project where we wanted to be, but we are scratching away and moving forward. Other than that, the other major issue that we're looking at at Public Works is the potential issue that the B's Ferry disposal sites will no longer be accepting any plastic bags, which will have impacts on the residents as well as on our Public Works staff. And we're discussing it and reviewing what we can do about that, and we have directed council to go to preliminary work on an ordinance that does not allow us to use plastic bags so that we can meet with the B's Ferry and the county's requirements. Other than that... Ah, of course. Excuse me. That's not for garbage. That is for yard debris. Thank you, Sandy. I do appreciate that. Oops. Sorry. And that's pretty much it. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 2nd, 2011, 4:00 PM.
The options, let me ask a question. The options dealing with the no plastic bags are to use paper bags that you buy at Lowe's or somewhere else. What about containers that are designated for yard waste and stuff like that, similar to our household waste?
We did discuss that a bit, and I'm not sure exactly what we came up with on that. Director Pitts, can you, I mean, because there was, currently, we do, Director Pitts, if you want, if you want to talk about it. Yeah, that really is...
Currently, the ordinance says Public Works does pick up yard debris that are in open containers, plastic containers. So we will physically pick them up and dump them in the back of a packer. I don't think that part of it should change. I think you need to have the rest of us have an option. So it's gonna be either paper bags, recyclable bags, or some sort of container.
Okay. We're not getting in the business of providing residents with open containers for yard debris. Okay, that's, I mean, that's just another level of detail and a cost to us, even though we might charge the residents. Thank you. And the storm order, our intention is if the schedule gets met and we have no hiccups, we'll be making a decision at council next month on the awarding of the drainage contract.
That's correct.
So, I know. Fingers crossed.
So far, so good.
Knock on wood. A lot of things have to fall in place. Okay, any other questions for Public Works? None heard? Moving on, Recreation Committee, please.
Yeah. Our meeting was held January 6th. I was elected chairman of the committee, and Brian Duffy vice chairman.
I was elected chairman of the committee and Brian Duffy, vice chairman. As you can well believe, the busy time for the rec over the holidays, the Miracle on Thirty Fourth Street, a huge success, sold out for all the performances, and our next production is apparently Peter Pan, so Ryan, get ready. Auditions are March 22nd. Anyone who's interested should sign up at the rec center. Many exercise classes, one new one's been added, Hoops and Hoops Basic, which is dig out your old hula hoop and get over to the rec for an exercise music class. November 12th is the last middle school dance for the year. Over two hundred young adults were in attendance. The next dance is scheduled for February 18th at seven o'clock. The November and December teenagers were busy, forty-six attended in November, fifty-three in December. Schools out, activities in December attracted over a hundred and forty participants. Now, upcoming, we have some registrations, youth baseball registration and girls softball registration is January 18th through February 11th. Girls softball, adult softball, and three-on-three hoops is the 31st of January through the 25th of February to register. So, big events coming up for the rec are the Blues Bash, and we should all support that and attend, it's a great event. Two-day event, February 5th from five to eight-thirty, that's a Friday, and February 6th, or Saturday, I'm sorry, and February 6th from two to five. Another big event for me and my family, Doggy Day at the Rec, which is the 26th this year. The rec committee also discussed the East Cooper Triathlon, and we voted to cease IOP's involvement unanimously. Our next meeting is February 1st at four o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Recreation?
Not a question, but I'd just like to thank Jimmy Ward for all the work he's done. The place has been such a great success this past year. He's doing such a wonderful job in getting the kids on the island and surrounding communities involved in it. I just wanted to make that, I know the recreation sponsors, but pretty much Jimmy is running the show there and does a wonderful, wonderful job.
He had to jump in with both feet also.
And play sand.
Play sand.
And he receives no income from doing that. In fact, spends thousands of dollars to do that for the city's children and residents.
Labor of love.
Yes.
All right, moving on, Personnel Committee, please.
We did an eenie-meenie-minie-mo. Personnel Committee met January 5th, and unlike the other committees, we did not elect a chairman, and we didn't have all three folks present at the committee meeting, so opted to wait until next month to elect a chairman. Under old business, coming up time for annual evaluation, so put that in your calendars, get some time set aside for that. We've got a new system this year, so we'll all be working through that. We talked about the appointments of the ad hoc committee for water quality study. We are still open to folks to be on that committee, so if you are interested, please call City Hall and let them know that you're interested. We want to get some good involvement. We also talked about recognizing folks who've been on commissions for a long period of time, and we've had some folks that just went off. And please understand, the city does recognize those folks. We have, at the same time, had some citizens that have served for years and years and years and devoted their time to the city, and we're looking at giving them a little additional recognition. We had a short executive session and adjourned. Our next meeting will be at, I've got it. Marie, when is our next meeting?
February 1st. I'm sorry. I've read too far down. The other thing I have to report is our December Safety Sweepstakes winners. For the Recreation Department, Ben Hull. For Public Works, Charles Williams. For Fire Department, Richard Hathaway. And for the Police Department, Jimmy Ryan. Thanks to all those folks for being safe.
Any questions for Personnel Committee? None heard, let's go on to Real Property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real Property met on January 6th at eight-thirty a.m. All members were present. I was elected chair and Councilman Stone was elected vice chair. Marina Report, business has slowed down, which is seasonal, which is giving Brian Barrigan a chance to do some upgrades. They installed a laundry for our transient boats, and also this store was closed, which is after the fact, on January 17th to the 20th for some renovations. In process of putting a four-foot fence to protect one of the docks to allow people from, people to wander down on the docks where they shouldn't be, and that probably should be installed over the next couple of weeks. Discussion on an article in the Post and Courier about county taxes for large luxury boats, and there's a request for the city to get involved in that. The committee had discussed it thoroughly and decided that it was really a county tax assessor issue, and that the city would not be involved in anyone inquiring about, you know, what boats should be or should not be paying taxes, has been referred to the county for that discussion. Morgan Creek Grill Report, business has slowed down for the restaurant also, and they actually be closed on Mondays for their next few weeks on that. Okay. Beach Restoration, public comment ended on January 1st, we're moving along with that. Councilman, City Administrator Tucker has basically said the project is moving forward, and we're on target for that. A discussion to whether to extend, we had a request to extend the parking lot lease agreement with Showup Enterprises, and we decided to maintain the contract as we have it right now, and so we will not be extending that. Request have gone out for the engineering design and permitting of the Marina dredging. We've had three responses on that. The city administrator Tucker is reviewing those responses and coming up with a conclusion with that. On new business, it was discussed about looking into and adding, being proactive, adding electric charges for electric cars, and look into that and see where and what and what would be feasible for the city to be proactive and hopefully take care of visitors and tourists and even residents who would need an electric car charge. So, we're moving into studying that, and we'll be proposing down the road to City Council some ideas in regard to that. Last but not least, the Farmers Market Ad Hoc Committee falls under the Real Property Group, and they are scheduled to meet on Monday, January 31st at six P.M. If you have an interest and you want to participate, please take part in the meeting. And meeting, our next meeting for Real Property is scheduled for February 3rd at eight-thirty a.m.
Thank you very much. Questions on Real Property?
How are we on your leases? Is everybody current? We have to date, it's a slow season.
Yeah, I gave a rent report during the meeting, and I think I reported that everybody was current. All but one, yeah, we had one.
Who will be current in weeks, couple of weeks? Better than our usual. Okay, any other questions? None heard. Moving on to reports of city offices, boards, and commissions. You have your minutes from the accommodations tax. There's no meeting for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Planning Commission meeting minutes were in front of your positions as you arrived, so I'm certain you've committed them to memory.
I didn't meet the first, yes.
No, no, all right. One thing to note in there for your calendar is that they have selected the date of February 23rd to have the forum for public input on parking, and that will be held, I don't know what time, but it'll be in this building at the site. So, it'll be February 23rd at, I'm looking at Marie.
Six-thirty.
It's going to be held here?
Yes, it's going to be here.
Tell the calendars that we handed that out.
Okay, well, then I'll look. Six-thirty, good to know. So, if your schedule permits, there should be useful input. Planning Commission's going to chair it and host it, and, you know, those of us who want to be there can sit and contribute at our leisure, so hopefully many, if not all of us, can make that, so.
Could I ask a question? It seems like this might be a little tight venue here. Is there any chance that we could investigate perhaps Exchange Club if the Recreation Department has too many conflicts? I assume that's why we're not doing it at the rec department.
That is why we're not doing the rec department. We do have conflict with space at the rec department. The room size that they had available would hold about seventy people, which is about what we will hold here. So, that was the reason for...
Sandy's suggestion was to use the Exchange Club. I don't know what the capacity is. Somehow, I don't think it's much more than here.
It might not be.
Depends on the way you stand them up or not.
I think the Exchange Club would hold more, because we have our turtle party there, and that's all over a hundred and ten people easy, so just...
Yeah, we have a roster this weekend.
That's coming up.
We'll bring in two hundred people there.
All right, we'll look into the Exchange Club. There's no, nobody's hung up on a place, we just want to have the right place, so.
The day may be, they're booked for a number of different things, or the dates are very tight with the Exchange Club.
It's worth asking.
Okay, good. All right, moving on. Item nine on your hit parade, bill's already in the possession of council. In front of you, you have two versions of ordinance 2010-14. The first version, as you read the note, is the draft that was passed for first reading. And the second version is the draft now offered by our attorney, who has made some corrections or deletions more than anything, I guess, so very soon. So, the first order of business would be to move for reading 2010-14 as amended by legal counsel. Correct?
Correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think what you would like first is to have a motion to amend the ordinance to incorporate those changes that have been made, and then you would have a motion for second reading as amended.
Okay, I thought that's where I was going, but I like your version. Okay, can I have such a motion? Still move.
I'll second if you'll dispense from reading at word for word, please.
All right, motion second, any discussion?
Does this still mirror the state ordinance, or besides the stripped-out version?
Yes, I'm sure Sterling could speak to this better than me, but basically what she has removed from here are those things that really are already covered under state law, and the intent here was basically to simplify things for us in terms of enforcement for our police department. Just to remind everybody, we currently do not have a problem that we are pursuing of vessels on the right-of-way, but this would give us the mechanism to do it if we had boats that were abandoned on public right-of-way.
We don't have a mechanism now?
Not within our own code, no.
But we have a way to enforce that, don't we? Obviously not, but through the state code, through...
I don't know whether our police department could do that enforcement.
Are we discussing the orders or just the amendments, and then we need to talk about the ordinance?
Well, you do want to bet on the amendments first, that's correct.
All right.
I can just explain the amendments really quickly, what I mean. The revisions are just taking out the portions of, I kind of drew this from Mount Pleasant's ordinance on this, because they have done the same thing, and it tracks exactly the language from the state statute. It just gives the local authorities the ability and the authority and the procedures by which to go ahead and remove these types of abandoned vessels. Otherwise, it would be the state enforcement, and so this way the municipal police officers would do it themselves. What I've taken out of here has to do with titling of boats and things like that that really we don't want our police officers to have to deal with. That's something that the state can handle through state authorities, and I don't think that we need that on a local level, although the state statute does provide that municipalities can enact ordinances to, you know, pretty much mirror what the state does. I don't think that that's necessary in this case, that we want to get involved in those kinds of details. So, after I reviewed that again, I thought that's taken care of with the state, let's just go ahead and only deal with the seizure of the abandoned vessels and the procedures and anything having to do with removal of the vessels. So, I don't think we need the other portions, and that's why I recommended that we strike those sections.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries. So, now we're considering for second reading, ordinance 2010-14 as amended. Can I have a motion for second reading?
Second.
You made a motion, and you seconded it?
Seconded, no one made a motion for second reading.
I'll make a motion. He's made a motion, and you seconded it. Okay. As long as Marie got it right. Michael.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Chief, while you're here, can I ask you to come up and answer a couple of questions on this? Donnie asked me to surprise you, so you always get one. Chief, over the last year, how many instances have this been a problem for the police department?
None that I recall.
About last five years?
I don't recall any.
So, I mean, you know, the state mechanism is in place, it hasn't been a problem. Was that correct?
I can't say that we've had any issues without going back and actually pulling all numbers, but I don't recall any issues. I think it's more of a proactive stance that we're taking.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, Marty.
I think the chief said it well, this is a proactive stance. Several years ago, there was some planes that happened on the island in regards to zoning, and we took a lot of heat for not being proactive, regardless of it had never happened before, we hadn't had that situation before. I think now is the time to become proactive. We're going to have an ordinance on the book. This in no way has anything to do with private property, it's only watercraft, it's on public property. I think we need to have means to deal with it. And again, heaven forbid, we should have a disaster strike the island, but I think part of the reason Mount Pleasant enacted their ordinance was because of the many watercraft that were totally abandoned after the storm, and the city, state, whoever, had to pay for having them removed.
Okay, well said. Marty, Marty Sandy.
On that paying to remove, that's exactly what this states, if I'm not mistaken, in Now, my question really is that we get to sell whatever we remove if it's saleable, or we destroy it, or, there's all kinds of language in there. My question is that, and the closing sentence is, "The proceeds from such sales must be used by the city for administration of this chapter." I assume that means we're going to put another line item in on our financial reports as we seize something at some point in the future, a boat or a motor that have been abandoned, and we sell them, the monies will go into a specific line item and only be utilized for seizing other boats and abandoned motors? And I guess what my thought process is, if we're going to do that, we're using general funds to get started, like, why wouldn't we, or is it not legal to just put it in the general fund?
I think that it would go into the general fund, because we would be paying for activities related to the seizure out of the general fund.
Well, it says, "The proceeds from such sales," and if you read the... Well, it says, "The proceeds from such sales," and if you read before, it's the outboard abandoned boats, "must be used by the city for administration of this chapter."
The only way there'd be a residual balance is if we were able to sell a boat for more than it cost us to remove it. And that's highly unlikely.
We would use money from the general fund and repay ourselves to the general fund for what was actually expended.
If we did this and we wound up with a surplus, we could come back here and we could necessarily amend the ordinance to figure out what to do with that $22.30 or whatever it could be.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be voting against this ordinance. I really think that... I'm not even sure where it came from, how it's not a problem. It has not been a problem. DHEC is in place to take care of these issues. And to me, I know that this, you know, I think this may have come out of a problem that this wouldn't even fix if this was on the books for the city. So, you know, there is a cost to change the ordinances where we have to go, where it's all digitized now, we have to pay someone to do that. So that's an additional cost to the city just to make a change, which I'm not sure we use. Okay? There are ordinances up north where you can be fined for not shoveling your walk. So I don't think we need to be proactive and worry about putting that on place in case we get a snowfall again this year. So this, I mean, this just doesn't make sense. And if we do have this problem develop, I think we have the means to take care of it when that happens.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I've got a question. I guess I've read through the whole thing and I'm very confused. Where does the city's... What's city property? What's county responsibility? What's state responsibility? Would we be getting into all sorts of discussions on where this boat is abandoned? Is it really our problem or is it the state's problem or is it the city's?
We have a defined boundary that establishes the city's...
There is a...
Oh, yeah.
And have we looked at that as far as?
Oh, yeah. We have maps. We could...
Okay.
I could... I don't have it with me. We could show you a map.
What's the probability that a boat will end up getting abandoned on city property?
If there's a storm, a high...
Oh, okay.
And the storm doesn't have to be a major storm. It's just a matter of boats breaking loose and not having enough residual value for the owner to come retrieve it.
The thing that comes to mind to me is the county going through all the problems with the boats down there in the Ashley River that just abandoned and they, you know... And I'm just wondering who, I think it was a big discussion as to really who had the responsibility to get rid of those boats. And they spent a lot of time arguing about that.
They were trying to get the owner. And that's where it was.
Well, if they couldn't find the owner, then who's going to take care of it? So I'm just wondering.
Now, we know it's us.
Are we going to really solve a lot of problems with this or not?
Well, hopefully not. Hopefully, there aren't any problems.
Okay.
But if there's a boat abandoned in our waterway, we can, we'll have the authority to deal with it. All right. All in favor of ordinance second reading 2010-14? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Three nays.
Doug.
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 Mike. Ryan and Sandy.
Doesn't pass.
That's right.
Okay. Moving on. An ordinance amending Title V. This is 2011-1, first one of the new year. An ordinance amending Title V, Planning Development, Chapter Four, Zoning, Article Seven, Signs. Isle of Palms Code of Ordinances to Provide for Regulation Pertaining to Sandwich Board Signs. Can I have a motion for first reading of such ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Want any discussion on this? We can hold that for second reading?
Mr. Mayor, just really a question. The type of signs, will these signs be allowed to have any... What will be allowed to be put on these signs? Will they example be 80% Bud Light and then a line or two that says sandwiches, $5 or something? Because I really think if we're going to allow businesses to do this, we need to keep the over-commercialization of the signage.
We're talking six square feet. There isn't much they can put on there that you could read, nor do we control what wordage they put on the existing signs.
Three square feet per side if they're...
Was that how it was?
I thought it was six and six.
Two by three.
I would like to make an amendment to the ordinance and state that no commercial logos be allowed on the signage.
You're making a motion for that?
He's making a motion.
I'm making a motion to amend the ordinance for that.
There are some stipulations on amending at first reading. We need some legal guidance as to appropriate method here.
I think that's probably something we can discuss when we have second reading. And I will in the meantime, take a look at any constitutional types of...
Amen.
...on that. So we can save that discussion for next time and come prepared with maybe some revisions if I find that we didn't make anything like that.
However, all signs have logos.
Real estate companies, for example.
Are logos.
I mean, they all have logos, so.
So we're not going to get into a definition of logos here, I hope.
There are a lot of constitutional issues that come up with signage, so I'll have to take a look at that.
All right. So there was no second to the motion anyhow, so we'll let it lapse for the moment. All in favor of first reading? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. First reading is through. We're going to move on to proclamation in support of the legislative agenda of the Municipal Association. I'm going to ask the city administrator who's familiar with this to walk us through it.
Okay. Just by way of preamble, every year prior to the legislative session, the Municipal Association of South Carolina listens to the member local governments about their concerns related to what is going on with state law and presents some suggested changes in legislation and also some positions on existing proposed legislation that may be out there coming up in the session. And as part of their legislative agenda, they have requested this year that the local, member local governments actually pass this proclamation supporting what they're proposing for legislative activities coming up in the upcoming session. In order to make the decision about what is going to be included each year, they have small group meetings all over the state of South Carolina with various local government representatives. And in those meetings, we all talk about the various things that we're concerned about either with existing legislation, upcoming proposed legislation, or with existing laws that need to be, that there needs to be consideration for. So what this does is it covers, touches on each of those things proposed for the upcoming legislative session. So with that, I'll read it. Whereas cities and towns in South Carolina are the government closest to the people, providing the core services residents and businesses demand for a high quality of life. Whereas residents and businesses want their local city and town councils to have the flexibility to make decisions that are best for their communities while also being held accountable by their residents to spend wisely and govern locally. Whereas the flexibility for cities and towns to use their scarce dollars in challenging economic times can come from targeted changes in state law. Whereas on December 14th, 2010, the Municipal Association Board of Directors approved the 2011-12 legislative agenda that supports local elected leaders making decisions based on local needs and priorities. Whereas the legislative agenda is based around three legislative principles of promoting economic growth, enhancing a positive quality of life, and encouraging local accountability and fiscal responsibility that support the core functions of government that cities and towns provide. Whereas enclave annexation, municipal capital project sales tax, millage cap flexibility, and codes enforcement are the four major legislative issues that local elected leaders determine to have the greatest impact on their hometowns. Whereas the agenda also focuses on fiscal, economic development, infrastructure, and public safety issues that are important to cities and towns of all sizes and in all parts of the state. Whereas the City of Isle of Palms fully supports the agenda set forth by the Municipal Association of South Carolina Board of Directors for cities and towns to govern locally for residents. Be it therefore resolved that the Council of the City of Isle of Palms affirms on this 25th day of January 2011 its support for the Municipal Association's 2011-12 legislative agenda to direct more local decision-making to the local elected officials that govern the state's 270 cities and towns. Done and ratified this January 25th, 2011. Richard F. Cronin, Mayor.
Thank you. That's a proclamation. I'd like to have a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on it?
I'm going to vote for it, but there are a couple of things in this that I take some exception to. And I'm relatively active at a lot of different levels without going into a lot of detail. Quality of life is near and dear to all of us and particularly in our community, but statewide. And we have a problem in South Carolina, and it's taxation. And it has to do with property tax. And Act 388 is a prime problem. It has unfairly shifted the burden of tax from the residents to the businesses, as some of you are aware. And it needs to be corrected or we're not going to have job creation in the state of South Carolina. The unemployment numbers came out today for December. We're down again. All the rest of the nation's eking up. We have a serious tax problem. Businesses are not coming to this state the way they are to other states, particularly North Carolina and Georgia and Tennessee that are receiving them with open arms. But I am in favor overall of the concept. Just wanted to state that for the record.
Well stated. I think you've said that before.
Probably.
Very good. Any other comments? All in favor of the resolution? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Thank you very much. Two other pieces of business before we go too far. I want to let everybody know, if they don't already know, that the exchange club is having their world famous oyster roast this Saturday, 4:30 to 7:00 or 8:00, something like that.
Four to seven.
You show up at 4:30, they won't run out of oysters.
Until oysters are out.
You'll do fine. We have some of the Earth Wild Cookers, I think, right here. So it'll be a fine time. And who's Sandy? Who's in charge of weather?
I'll take credit because it's going to be gorgeous.
Okay. All right, you take weather.
Mark, come on, we can share it.
Well...
Plenty to go around.
Very good. So I hope everybody's there, all the citizens, everybody. It's a fine time. Under miscellaneous, we have consideration of the city's approved annual events. You have had a chance to study the list of approved events that we've had in the past. I know that two committees have already taken action on one event, and I'll throw that out right now. I'm going to move that the East Cooper Coastal Triathlon not be considered an approved event for the City of Isle of Palms. I'll make that in the form of a motion. Motion seconded. Any discussion on the triathlon? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
May I ask a follow-up question? Will that allow perhaps for consideration of other activities in that time period?
The intent now is for us to consider all of that we have in front of us, not to just hold something open for something three months from now, just to prove that which we have and go forward. I suppose if something came forward that was so overwhelmingly positive for the residents and the community, we'd entertain it. But the intention is to have this list, and that list is in black and white and rise with us for at least another year, if not beyond. So the intent is no, not to hold a space for some future event. In addition, Linda's made some notations here, so if you want to mark your document, you might have in front of you the... Where's my page?
So will this preclude a farmer's market from ever taking place?
No.
No.
We can always approve anything. The intent is not to have to deal with them one at a time, every month, something new coming along. We have approved events, so I don't want from there. But if we have an art market, you know, we can consider that or a farmer's market.
If I can make a couple of comments. One of the purposes of approving a list like this, I don't think a month goes by that either the city staff doesn't get contacted at whatever level, either the recreation department, police department, or a call to city hall. Or one of you gets contacted via email or on the street, someone who comes up who has a great idea for an event. It is always a good cause. I don't think we've ever had anything come before us that, you know, wasn't a good cause. But the point would be is that you would be able to respond that the city has a list of approved city events that's been adopted by council, and we feel as though that is all we can successfully manage at this time in terms of resources available and time available to give. It gives you a mechanism to deflect those requests so that maybe people will go to other local governments and, you know, perhaps have these events there. It doesn't stop a situation like the farmer's market where the city is considering moving forward with some new city sponsored event that where the initiative is coming from the city. But it does give us the ability to say no and deflect the monthly requests that we get. And typically, it works. Once these documents are adopted, then when we get the calls and we say, we, you know, we adopt this on an annual basis or how often you all want to do it, then they know that, you know, we just can't have these folks walking in the door every month with another, you know, for a good purpose event that we haven't planned for in our work plan and our budgeting. And sometimes the approach that people make will be that it's not going to cost you any city resources and we won't need any city personnel. And then a week or a week and a half in advance of the event, suddenly we find out they're crossing a road or they're going to be swimming or something where there's no question that we have to provide for the protection of them during that. So then it does unexpectedly tax our resources. So this is a tool so that you can help folks understand when they contact you that we do try to do a better job of managing those kinds of things for the city because it can quickly get out of hand. We are an attractive place to hold events, and we only have so many resources to divide among that.
We're an attractive group.
That's true. That's true. We do need to add to the list the fire prevention event in October. We typically do that, and that's just not on the list, so we will add that. There are two half rubber sessions now, not just one. So we would need to make that change. The Wanda Warriors Track Meet event, we have not had that in several years, so that could come off of the list as well. And the Taste of the Islands, we've had that a couple of years in a row, but we have not had it recently. So my suggestion would be that that come off the list. So depending on what your actions are here tonight, we will produce a new list that incorporates those changes. And we're going to change the months to quarters because every once in a while, we are forced to kind of flip between months. Like, for example, piccolo spado goes to the beach or sand sculpting. I mean, it depends on the tide as to whether or not that's in May or June. So we'll just put quarters of the year on here, not specific months.
One other off is the movie on the beach. The original Jesus.
Yeah, right. The ghostly tide tale movie at the beach, we no longer do that as well. So that could come off. We had talked about the MS Challenge Walk, which is actually scheduled for early part of March this year, but I think that approval was only for two years.
Two years.
And so I don't know that it's necessary for that to be on the list.
You can put it on the list. It'll be here. Yeah, I put it on the list. And then we visit again next year. We can take it off the following year because it'll probably go somewhere else.
Okay.
I don't think, if I remember right, they didn't, they weren't going to require much attention, maybe.
Actually, they said they would not require any attention.
Right.
They've got all their own volunteers to... It's very, I'll call it a limited type event, not a large number of people. There are going to be walkers, they're going to be kind of strung out, so it's not going to have a high impact.
But we will include it on the list.
Okay. Any... So I'd like to have a motion to approve the list as Linda has modified it here for the upcoming year.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Moved and seconded, any other discussion? None heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We do, any other miscellaneous business from anybody? We will have a short executive session where we will discuss legal matters where a legal suit is proceeding. We'll need to brief you on the status, so. I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So moved.
Yeah, we need to. We're out of executive session, we've made no decisions, made no motions, we just heard from our attorney on a legal suit matter. No votes, yes, sorry. All right, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're out of here.